Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I forgot we have a little call and response today. We are about to get started for our special meeting right now at 5:30. So we're ready? Yep. Roll call. Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed?
Second.
Motion's been made with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. Now we will have an invocation from Pastor Michael E. Coleman from Antioch Baptist Church. If you would please come up to the... Come up front here, please, sir. Right here. You can come around.
Shout out our heads. Eternal God, our Father, we come in the name of Jesus Christ to thank you for your goodness and loving kindness. We come to thank you, Father God, for just these proceedings, that we are here as citizens of this great city, and we want great things to happen, but they cannot happen, so we invoke you into this proceeding. We ask you to come and have your presence, and we pray that your Holy Spirit would abide in this over these leaders. Your Spirit of wisdom, your Spirit of love, your Spirit that brings forth justice and makes sure there's equity and fairness within us as a people. So, Father, we come praying over each of these leaders, that you give them a spirit of wisdom, that as they come over the issues, that they are many citizens, and yet they must make hard decisions. So give them the wisdom to make those decisions. Then, Father God, we've come not missing this historic moment. We have been allowed to see an African-American become the first mayor of this city of Waterloo, and we just praise your name. We thank you for all our preceding mayors, we thank you for all our preceding leaders. They have brought us thus far, and we stand on their shoulders, but we look for a new thing. We look for a better thing. We look for a hopeful thing in the hearts of all these citizens. I ask now your protection over this new mayor. I ask you, oh, Father God, to give him the heart to be able to unite and join this people, to be able to carry out the vision, and that you would bring through him and all these leaders prosperity to this city. Bless us now, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Right. Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
Quentin Hart.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
In the city of Waterloo.
In the city of Waterloo.
Blackhawk County, Iowa.
Blackhawk County, Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations, Mr. Hart.
We have some more duties left to do. I would like to call up Councilman Steve Schmidt, Councilman Bruce Jacobs, and Councilman Jerome Amos as well. It is such an honor this evening to have worked with Steve for how many? Eight years or so. We actually started together. Jerome I've known for a while, and Bruce I'm looking forward to. I had the opportunity to fellowship with he and his wife at church, so I'm looking forward to the next several years altogether. But, gentlemen, please raise your right hand. I state your name.
Jerome Jacobs.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
In the city of Waterloo.
In the city of Waterloo.
Blackhawk County, Iowa.
Blackhawk County, Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor pro temp.
I move to receive and file oath of office documents of mayor and council members.
Second.
Motion's been made with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion approving Mayor Hart's recommendation of appointing Ron Welper as mayor pro temp.
Second.
Motion's been made with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion approving Mayor Hart's appointment of Daniel J. Trelka as Director of Safety Services, Chief of Waterloo Police Department.
Second.
Motion's been made with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion approving Mayor Hart's appointment of Pat Trelor as Chief of Fire Services.
Second.
Motion's been made with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Steve. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion approving council appointment of Dave Zellifer as City Attorney.
Second.
Motion's been made with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion approving council appointment of Susie Scher as City Clerk.
Second.
Motion's been made with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion approving City Clerk's appointment of Kelly Felch as Deputy City Clerk.
Felkley.
Felkkey?
Felkley.
Excuse me, Kelly.
Second.
Motion's been made with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Finally, I'd like to make a motion approving Mayor Hart's reapportment of all other current city officers and directors.
Second.
Motion's been made with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Does he need to read all of these, or can he just make the motion? Or if there's any discussion at that time, we could do that.
He can just make the motion without reading every committee.
Council, do you have a problem with that?
Nope, not me.
Okay, all right. We're ready for someone.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file Mayor Hart's appointment of the following council standing committees for 2016, 2017, as listed below.
Second.
Motion's been made with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right. That was easy. But we do have some... Two, we have a finance committee meeting at 5:45 that should last a few minutes, and we also have a 5:50 regular session to be held so that we can take care of a little business this new year. So we have approximately four minutes until the next meeting starts.
Let's call the finance committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
You can get it, Ron, I can hear you.
Bruce?
I move.
Second? I have a second on that, Bruce?
On just the agenda, did you approve the minutes as well?
And the minutes of December 21st, 2015, as proposed.
We have motion and a second on both of those. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Bruce, if you... This is being your first time through this, you will see that we have travel requests, one through three, and then we have the pre-authorization of $1,000. Generally, what we do is one of you will take the travel request, and one will take the pre-oths, and then I will finish up with the line item budget amendments.
Okay, the first travel request would be for Wayne Castle, social engineering. He has a class, Society of Lance Surveyors Workshop in Ames, Iowa, on January 15th. Amount not to exceed $130. The second request, Keith Caspari, Director of Aviation, Class Spring 2016 Meeting of the Iowa Public Airport Association, IPAA. His destination is Grand River Center, Dubuque, Iowa, May 11th through the 13th, 2016. Amount not to exceed $400. And the third travel request, Keith Caspari, Director of Aviation, Class Cedar Valley Coalition 2016. Destination, Washington, DC. Dates are February 22nd to the 24th. On that, 2016, amount not to exceed $1,340.
Second.
We have the motion and a second on those three travel requests. Is there any discussion or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, oh, Mr. Schmidt?
Is it been a procedure, normal procedure, that we've had the airport director go on this trip? I guess I don't remember that's happened in the last eight years. I'm just wondering.
Keith, would you like to respond to that?
Good evening, council members. Keith Caspari, Director of Aviation. I recently received an invitation from members of the Cedar Valley Alliance and Chamber staff that they felt that with the transportation for the airport priorities being as important as they are, that they felt that I might be of assistance to add those priorities for meeting with Senate and Congressional staff and the members.
And are they paying for that, or where's that money coming from, Keith?
This will be paid for out of the airport budget.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion, those measures pass. Pre-oths?
And pre-oths. We have airport in the amount of $8,175 for airport general liability insurance for fiscal year 2016. Building maintenance, $6,463 for annual contract renewal with J-Tech, Inc., to provide inspections and chemicals for cooling towers at City Hall and Young Arena. Planning, $3,000 for appraisals for 70 and 90 Sycamore Streets. And 2006 Dubuque Road, police. $979.99 plus $49 shipping for K-9 deployment and heat alert with pager system. Sanitation, $17,500 for replacement tin or tink bucket. Sewer department, $7,197 plus $300 shipping for replacement. Alma electric actuator assembly for Easton control valve.
I have a motion on those items?
Bruce, looking for a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on those. Is any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lynn.
On the airport insurance, how many... Susie, how many agencies bid on that? You said you had bids. We took bids, so we had several. Did we have agencies bid, or did the one agency only get quotes?
Correct, one agency got quotes. We don't go to different brokers and ask them to get quotes.
We didn't get bids, in other words.
No, we get... Our agent goes out and gets quotes from several companies.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. And the line items. I make a motion to approve the line items amended, which are on file at the City Clerk's office, and I need a motion to approve that.
Second. Oh, you need a motion?
I need a motion.
A motion to approve the budget line items to be amended.
Second.
We have motion and a second on that. Any discussion? Hearing it... Mr. Lynn.
On number seven, why would we not do the match using TIP funds? Why would we use local option sales tax? It's in a TIP district. It benefits a recent TIP beneficiary. Shouldn't we be using TIP funds for that match?
Can someone address that? No?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. We have typically used local option funds to match the RISE projects. That's obviously a decision that council can change, but typically we wouldn't use the local option money to use that. It is allowed under the approved referendum of the local option sales tax money.
But we could use TIP funds.
We could.
How do we accomplish that? How do we ask you to use TIP funds?
I'd imagine we'd have to... I don't know. I guess I'll have to figure that out, going back and look at the budget, and see if we have to come back and actually take a formal action. Because I think we took an action when we applied for the RISE funds and noted we would match it with the local option sales tax funds. So I'll have to look at the documents.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bills payment this month, this week. That's 3,514,982.72.
Second.
We have motion and a second on the bills payment. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes.
A motion to adjourn?
We have a motion and...
Second.
And a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
We're about to start our regular council's council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we will stand, please, and have a short moment of silence. We already had some reflection earlier. Short moment of silence. All right, thank you. Now we'll be led in the pledge by Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director.
Please approve the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, no matter how... Invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, and also the minutes of December 21st, 2015, regular session as proposed.
Second.
Motion's been made with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. We have an agenda. Right now, we have a proclamation of National Mentoring Month, and we have Katie Orlando, Executive Director of the Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northeast Iowa; Ellen Vanderloo, Mentor and Volunteer Coordinator of Teammates; and Jennifer Broth from Executive Director of the Joe Foundation. And that is Joe, as in the Bible. Do you would please come on up and join me? And I just want to say, just quickly, one of the best ways to get back to this community is through mentoring. I know we have council people here that have personally mentored youth as well. So if you want to find out how you can get back to your community, impact your community, get involved in the lives of some of our young people as well. So... I'd love you to come over here. Just throw that your coat on. You're not planning on being here long, are you? But you do have to take off that hat. Thank you, sir, all right. All right, City of Waterloo proclamation. Whereas National Mentoring Month is a time we honor the caring individuals across the city of Waterloo who are committed to helping the next generation of Americans reach their full potential. And a mentor is a caring, consistent presence who devotes time to a young person to help that individual discover personal strength and achieve their potential through a structured and trusting relationship. And whereas quality mentoring encourages positive choices, promotes self-esteem, supports academic achievement, and introduces young people to new ideas. And whereas mentoring programs have shown to be effective in combating school violence and discipline problems, substance abuse, incarcerations, and truancy. And whereas research shows that young people who were at risk for not completing high school but who had a mentor were 55% more likely to be enrolled in college, 81% more likely to report participating regularly in sports or extracurricular activities, and more than twice as likely to say they held a leadership position in a club or sports team, and 78% more likely to volunteer regularly in their communities. And whereas youth development experts agree that mentoring is critical to the social, emotional, and cognitive development of youth, helping to navigate the path to adulthood more successfully. Whereas mentors help young people set career goals and use their personal contacts to help young people meet industry professionals and find jobs. And whereas all of the above listed benefits serve to link youth to economic opportunity while also strengthening the fiber of our communities. And whereas, despite these benefits, one in three youth will reach the age of 19 without a mentor, constituting a mentoring gap that demonstrates a need for collaboration and resources. And whereas the city of Waterloo appreciates the contributions of all those who serve as mentors and Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northeast Iowa, Teammates, and the Joe Foundation for bringing your certified mentoring programs to the city of Waterloo for all to benefit. Now, I therefore... Not Buck Clark. We'll have to get you a revised one. Put everybody on notice. Now I therefore, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the city of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim January 2016 as National Mentoring Month, and also call upon all public officials, business and community leaders, educators, senior citizens, and all Waterloo citizens to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs.
Do you have a couple words for us, Ms. Lynn?
So I'm joined by my colleagues Ellen and Jennifer, and several of our mentees, or littles, and our mentors, or bigs. There are three state-certified mentoring organizations that serve youth in Waterloo: Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northeast Iowa, Teammates, and the Joe Foundation. Currently, we're serving over 400 Waterloo youth together collaboratively, either in the schools or in the community. However, as Mayor Hart mentioned, there is a mentoring gap, and it's not immune to Waterloo. There are over 100 boys and girls who have been waiting for a mentor in Waterloo. So we encourage anyone listening tonight to think if you have a few free hours a month, to either spend it with a child one-on-one in the schools or one-on-one with a child out in the communities. We would hope that you would consider applying to make that difference.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Katie. Can we hear at least from one of the young people that... I think one randomly who would like to say what's so cool about having a mentor? Anyone? Oh, you read it. Anyone want to say something cool about having a mentor?
The cool thing about having a mentor is they help you get your grades, but at the same time, hell, you can have fun.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. And we're hoping that more people get in contact with you. Is there a contact number that people can call so they could overwhelmingly join and be a mentor?
Sure, well, all three of us have our own contact information. Big Brothers, Big Sisters is iowabigs.org. I know the Joe Foundation is joeffoundation.org. Thejoeffoundation.org. And Teammates works directly with the Waterloo Schools District, and I know that they have their contact information available on the district page.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's one A through two G, and within that is the bills payment again. Three million, five hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. That's three comma, five one four comma, nine eight two point seven two.
Second. Motion's been made with the proper second. Any discussion, council? All right, roll, uh, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Um, that is the end of the business aspect of the council meeting. Um, there is a section on here for oral presentations of, uh, three minutes or less. Uh, if anyone would like to come up to the, uh, podium for oral presentations, uh, this is the time to do so. Let's see, ma'am. Huh?
May I talk to you?
Um, sure. We got Dan. We don't normally do this, but tonight, tonight we will.
It's an exception.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Hart, I just want to tell you, I represent five organizations, and they've asked me-
Quinn, Quinn, give her a mic.
Thank you again. I want, I represent five organizations that asked me to come to present to you a graduate order message. I want to thank your team for putting you in office. I want to thank the, the council and your people are here tonight. I also want to tell you that, uh, Frida and a couple more of you couldn't make it, so they asked me to do it. So if you would hold this, and I'll make the presentation to you. This one comes from, uh, this one is from, um, the Coalition to Build a Better Community, which takes care of Terry Thomas, Gary Birch, Jeff Zappino, and Ween. This is the leadership in excellent work. We know that you've done your job. You got your education, and if you got your education, took you, followed your step, and you made it right. Number two, right. This one is, he has a picture of this one. This one's done by the potential trailblazers. With this, we have, uh, uh, all the big wheels, you know, heard of, your President Obama, all them, your, your frat man, your, all your people, Amanda, I'm sorry. And so we, we want to ask your trailblazers because you have done a good job preparing yourself. This one is Iowa's second historical thing because you've done a historical thing here, and it goes to, this goes to things like Reverend Jesse Jackson, Dr. King, Hillary, Russell Lasley, Hail Steed, Inga Trentwell. There's a lot of people from Waterloo who laid the groundwork for you to get here. They, they signed that, that's for you. And here's another one. This is the governor.
Okay.
Their, their governor statue. This is the Coalition to Build a Better Community, and on this one, we have, uh, I didn't read the other one here, so I'm sorry, I got a weird, because they sent me here. No, this is a, this is a here. Uh, this is Jeff Zappino, Adam Ween, Mick, uh, Mixy Tan, Steve Schmidt, Frida Ween, and Van Gary. And there's one around here with the school. Waterloo School was sending one up here to send one to give to you. Waterloo School, well, everybody know East High's producing mayors of history. And last, I, last, I think we know your father's been a great role model for you, and your family, I remember when your mother was sick, nothing stopped you hitting that road, going down to see mom. And we know that that kind of a consideration for your family, you also have for your citizenship here. So this can come from the governor, just to build a better community. This is Terry Branstad to you.
All right, thank you very much. Such, such an honor, and I, I'm praying in two years I can get those sayings right out there.
Hi, my name is Joyce Wilder. I live at two twenty-six Bates Street, and I just want to say I got ninety-nine things I want to talk about. But first, I just want to say congratulations to you being mayor. Congratulations to you, Jerome. Congratulations to all the ones that got re-elected and got, it got voted in, and I will be here at the meetings watching you all.
I, uh, give this guy your, oh, my goodness. I'm Dwayne Ayers, twelve oh five Bishop Street, and we, all the back row boys, are here to welcome the new mayor. We're here to see that you and the council people give everybody in this city a fair shake. Everybody to be treated equally, and everybody able to speak their piece without being told, hurry up and sit down. We appreciate you, we're glad you're here.
All right, thank you.
I dream not because I have to. I dream to prove to others that dreams come true, and when I was just ten plus two, I dreamed I traveled to South Africa with Desmond Tutu lyrically fighting apartheid tantamount to poetically shaping my angle of the world's view. You see, I dreamed the possibilities of hope is like catching the flu, and I dreamed the city can collectively undo the misfortunes Waterloo has been forced into. I dreamed that hate crimes are taboo, and I dreamed that Cupid shot his arrow and we fell for you. I dreamed this piece sticks like crazy glue, but since I know that sometimes dreams are broken in two, I dream of rose-colored glasses for cynics to look through. I dream just in case you forget to, and I dream when I don't even want to. And if it's true that someday I must pay my dues, I dream a billion-dollar bailout will help me too. I dream of Brother Mike and I rewriting hip-hop news. I dream of QJ and Quentin spitting the blues, and if my creator ever grants me one dream to never undo, I dream that our citizens will welcome Quentin Hart as the mayor of Waterloo.
Thank you so much. That was inspiring, but please state your name and your address.
Oh. I'm Shere Khan, eleven fifty-five Dixon Drive Apartment Four, also known as Chill and the Conscious Poet.
Willie Smith, twenty-two sixty Ashland, A-S-H-L-A-N-D Avenue, Waterloo, on the north end of Waterloo. All right? And Amapa Donald Street, if anybody wants to know. And I'd like to welcome the new mayor. The last time I was up here, I kind of got told to sit down, I made too much noise. But I hope it don't happen with this administration. Uh, welcome the new council people, the old council people, all the ones that re-elected, especially our police chief-
Director of-
-safety. Uh, I'd like to ask that, uh, we come away with a different point of view with what this administration, unite Waterloo, get some more police coverage, get rid of a little crime, and we'll be praying for you. Thank you.
I was waiting for this moment. My name is Miriam Tyson. I live at forty-three fifty Hoff Road. Uh, let me convey my warm congratulations to all of you, and in particular, the mayor, Mayor Quentin Hart. Um, I do have one concern, and I'm just going to state it, and then y'all can figure out what you're going to do with it, but I'll be back to get the answer. Um, as I said, I live on Hoff Road, and there is a sign morning, um, out there where we made some changes in the road. It was straight, and now it is kind of winding. We still don't have a light out there, and I just don't think that it's safe. Um, we need some kind of lighting out there, particularly when we go around the curve. I think Councilman David Jones know what I'm talking about. So if you guys could work on that, I'd really appreciate that. Actually, the residents would really appreciate that. Thank you.
So, so we'll have, uh, David get in contact with, uh, signs and traffic and work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Mohammed, two oh one Forest Avenue, Waterloo, Iowa.
Could you take off your hat, sir?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Ben Harvey, eight twenty-seven Steely Street.
Lance Dunn, forty-eight fifty Wing Haven. We came, uh, just to stand in unity and also to show our support to our brother of , uh, over thirty-eight plus years, our friend, and, uh, that was really hard for Ben to take off his hat and take that order, by the way. But you all know that. And also to say sir to our, our best friend. Uh, but we are exceedingly proud of you. We're praying that God will be with you, brother, strengthening you and your leadership. We're here to support you as we have always been by the grace of God. We pray that this community will back you, that the criticism will be worthy and constructive criticism to aid you so that we can unify this community, that all of those members of this society will realize the importance of unity and what that looks like in actuality so that we can heal this community. But we're extremely proud of you, brother. We love you. We pray that God will be with you and your family in this journey. Peace.
I'm Deborah Berry, two oh eight Greenborough Road. I'm also the State Representative of House District Sixty-two, which is the north side of Waterloo, Evansdale, Elkhorn, and Raymond. And I'm just here to congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, Quentin Hart, and just to say from the State House and the Iowa Legislature, we look forward to working with you as mayor to do whatever we can to help push your agenda in terms of making Waterloo one city of, you know, getting rid of that dividing line, that river, and making our city one city that we can all be proud of. And to Bruce and Jerome, or pardon me, Councilmen, uh, Jerome Amos and Bruce Jacobs, congratulations to all of you and Steve for your reappointment as well, and just truly look forward to being part of this new Waterloo that you campaigned so diligently on and won. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Representative Mayor.
Forgot the police chief, I'm Tony Chief Trucker, we're working with you as well. Thank y'all.
And Representative Berry, uh, we will be contacting you as well to make sure the commercial rollback continues on the state level.
Good evening. I'm Willie Mae Wright, former Waterloo City Councilwoman. I am a woman, I can keep my cap on. But Quentin and all of you elected council people, congratulations. Congratulations to all of you, and most of all, my cousin, everybody was wondering, what cousin? Through his mother. And I just want to say, you did not recognize, but I will, your brother from Milwaukee, Wisconsin is here, your mom and your dad. Would you recognize your family? All of us?
All right, Mrs. Wright, could you please give us your address?
Everybody knows, three twenty-seven Almond Street, Waterloo, Iowa, five oh seven oh three.
I started to, uh, I knew your address by heart, and I started to say. Uh, my family's in the audience, could my family please stand up? My mother, uh, my mother, father, brothers, uh, my daughter, uh, my sons are here somewhere. Uh, so, so we welcome them as well, sister-in-law, nieces, nephews, nannies. All right, so thank you. And also, before we do that, um, Bruce, Councilman Jacobs, do you have family in the audience as well?
Um, they were here, I think they've, um, went out.
They went out, okay. Uh, Mr. Councilman Amos, do you have family here to see me?
I do have some family here, they may have left. If you would, please stand up. There's my wife, there's my son, the third, my sister Diane, my niece Desiree, and my daughter Carrie.
All right. Mr. Councilman Schmidt?
No, they're waiting for me.
They've been through this before. Yeah, and we are at the Ramada at, uh, six, oh, well, six something, so we will be there. Um, yes, ma'am.
Well, who am I to stand between us and the refreshments? So I'm going to make it quick. My name is Betty Andrews. I am, uh, representing the Iowa Nebraska NAACP where I serve as president. My address is eighty-seven twenty-three Oakdale Drive, I live in Des Moines, though. Um, I just wanted to take a moment just to congratulate everyone, and particularly you, Mayor Hart. Thank you so much for your service thus far. We are looking for great celebrations from you, we're looking for great things, and we're also looking for a lot of good work from you. We know that, that Waterloo has two stories to tell, a lot of great stories to tell, but we also know there are some tough stories that we have to address, and I've seen you in places and we've, um, addressed those. So we just look forward to working with you and just want to extend our deepest congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, to be able to travel to be here. Uh, anyone else?
Motion for adjournment.
Uh, motion.
Well, I guess we're not done yet.
We got a couple, we got a couple more.
Good evening, uh, council persons. Uh, my name's James Lipsy. I'm Quentin Hart's oldest brother, and, uh, just like to congratulate him, uh, for all the strides that he's taken to achieve this position. It wasn't easy, uh, he, uh, always was on it, just moving forward, moving forward, moving forward. And, uh, Quentin comes to you with passion for this city. It's not just about the people, but it's about the city. I grew up in Waterloo, I know a lot of things that have transpired. Uh, I know about, uh, being, uh, bussed my first year, uh, to West High, uh, when Waterloo made the changes. I even worked with, uh, Waterloo Planning Commission myself back in the day. But, uh, this is about Quentin, and it's about Waterloo. Quentin can't do it all by himself.
That's right, that's right.
And, uh, what I want everyone to understand is that it takes a body, it takes a group to make things work. And just remember, there's more than one way to be right. If you work together, it'll come together. And that's all I have to say.
Sorry, which way?
Again, James Lipsy, sixteen oh eight West Wright Street, Milwaukee, Wisconsin.
So, um, just, uh, in, yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, my name is Francine Williams, and I live at eighteen forty West Third Street, Apartment B. Um, I wanted to congratulate you first, Mayor Mark, Mayor Hart, and all of the re-elected and the, uh, newly elected officials. Uh, it's going to be a problem because we're going to be talking about trains, trains, trains. I'm not bringing it all up tonight, but they got to do a schedule or something. This is ridiculous. Anytime you have to sit at the train for thirty minutes, it's, it's getting worse. So, it's all over the east side of Waterloo. So, okay, that was it, just want to congratulate you, don't want to hold you up from the treats that are coming next. So, yeah, we'll be bringing that up a whole lot.
Yeah, all right.
All right, thank you.
Um, to the city council, my name is Galisa Allen. My address is one eleven Mohawk Street. Um, I just want to congratulate Quentin Hart and the other elected officials in Waterloo. I love Waterloo, Waterloo is my home. Um, I left, but I came back, and just to address the issue about the trains, because I said, I've lived here all my life. My grandfather was, um, well, from Mississippi, used to bring, um, workers up here to work on the railroad. So, trains on the tracks in Waterloo are like, uh, historical things. This was, this is a rail, was a railroad city. So, we just have to be a little patient, and I do get mad myself about it, but like I said, Waterloo is a railroad town, and they do move our products here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Yes, sir.
Phil Camire, five twenty-six Home Park Boulevard, Waterloo, Iowa. Again, as one of the back row boys, uh, Mr. Hart, I congratulate you. You've done a super good job. You've been a super good job getting elected. Can say nothing but positive about it. But I would also like to hope that we are starting a new year. You know, we've been named, we've been called all kinds of nasty names and earmarked as bad people and anti-Waterloo, and you're all familiar with the scene. You know, that speaks to the character of the person that does the calling. We respect you people. Believe it or not, we respect every one of you. We understand what you're doing. We don't come up here to put Waterloo down. I've lived here all my life, seventy-seven years. I grew up on the east side. I went to every East High school. I went to junior high right here, right here where this building is. That's where I started junior high. I have total pride in Waterloo. We don't come up here to be troublemakers, but you need to understand, there's this document. It's called the Constitution. It has one for Iowa and it has one for the United States. We have the right to dissent. We have that right. We have the right to question. That doesn't make you bad people. It doesn't give us the right to call you names, and we've never done that. Never called not one person setting up your name. Anytime we speak, I got up here, I give you my name, my address. If I put something in the courier, I put my name on it. I stand behind anything I say. That doesn't make me right. I'll admit that. I'm going on the facts that I know. That's what I'm going on. It's your job then to disseminate those facts to us, the public. Why are you doing what you're doing? And we have the right to question that. So I hope that this week can start out two thousand and sixteen, understanding that the back row boys are not coming down here to harass you and to do all the other names that we've been called. We come down here to participate in our democracy. Our democracy says we have the right. You people work for us. We have the right to ask you questions. We're paying you. We have that right. But that doesn't make you bad people. We understand that. Just please give us a little respect this year. Let's not call us names. Let's not put it in the newspaper because they love to print that. That's their job to create trouble, and they do a good job of it. So just give us a break. Let us participate in our government. We want to see this city thrive too. Nothing would be better. I thank all of you. I appreciate it. God bless y'all. Just do a good job this year, and let us participate with peace. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just two quick things, so we're gonna waste the hour. The name, and I'm not even going to repeat it because if you repeat names like that where people say stuff, the BRB, then you give it life. I'm not going to give that name life. I'm not going to call anyone out of their name. I'm going to expect civility when our department heads approach to speak at the podium. I'm going to expect civility from them, as well as the council and myself as well. But I'm also going to ask for civility of those that approach the podium to speak. No one here has the trademark on being perfect or making every decision perfect. So I wholeheartedly look forward to conversation in two thousand and sixteen. We have a new mayor. I'm not going to do things the same way, but the level of expectation and participation that I expect, not just from you, but of myself, is going to be different because I'm my own individual. And I have great admiration and respect for the city council that I serve with. We may not agree on everything, but the fact is, we don't have to be disagreeable in public amongst one another. So I believe that we need to be the ones that are setting example. You know, my children watch council meetings. All of our children and family watch council meetings. People that want to bring business to the City of Waterloo are watching these shows as well. So we're going to look forward to the future. Everyone has a clean slate. We're going to build, and we're going to move Waterloo like no other time in this city's history. But, 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 just real briefly, but it begins with all of us. Waterloo has great things to offer, but we have a little tweaking to do in some areas to move forward. So that is my intention. I can't speak for everyone up here, but we want to see the best for Waterloo. So look forward to Waterloo being on the move in the future. And last but not least, the council can also only do so much, and department heads can do so much. It is up to the entire community to get involved, whether it's mowing a yard for someone, whether it's doing whatever you can to move this community forward. There's an expectation on this community as well. So, Mr. Mayor, propose to him.
Like to move to receiving and file oral comments and adjourn.
Second. Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So you're at the Ramada for those who can make it.